I'd like to call the meeting of the Tacoma Public Schools Board of Directors to order for Tuesday, December 13th, 2016. Our rise for the flag salute, which I will lead tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
General Counsel, would please call the roll.
President Viall.
Here.
Vice President Oshka.
Present.
Debbie Winskill.
Andrea Cobb.
Here.
Scott Hines.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, before we move into the agenda, I would just like to say that it has been an honor and a pleasure to serve as President of the Board of Directors this year, and I want to thank my colleagues for all their assistance, support, and help during that time. Okay, with that, item four, board reorganization and election of off, yes, Superintendent Santorno.
Before we make the change, I just want to make sure that we acknowledge Director Karen Viall's presidency. It has been a pretty much of a boomer year for the Tacoma Public Schools under her leadership. We won the CUBE National Award, we were a Board of Distinction, we had record-high graduation rates, and she has continued to show unparalleled civic leadership. So can we give her a hand, please?
Thank you, Dr. Viall. Thank you. Well, it's easy to show the leadership when you serve with the people that I do. So, thank you. All right, Board President, I will call for a nomination for President to serve during the ensuing year.
Madam President, I nominate Director Oshka.
I will second that nomination. Are, is there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will declare the nominations closed. Would General Counsel, please call the roll.
Director Hines.
Aye.
Director Cobb.
Aye.
Director Winskill.
Director Oshka.
Aye.
Director Viall.
Aye. By a vote of four, zero, Director Oshka is elected Board President, and with that, I am going to turn the gavel over to her, and we'll trade places in a little bit.
Onward in a seventeen and eighteen, be better than the years before with the people that we have on board.
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to move on to item number four-two for Board Vice President. Can I have a nomination for Vice President for the next year?
Madam President, I would like to nominate Director Andrea Cobb for Board Vice President.
So nomination for Andrea Cobb, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Seeing no further nominations, nominations are closed, and we will vote. Will you please call our own?
Director Hines.
Aye.
Director Cobb.
Aye.
Director Winskill.
Director Oshka.
Aye.
Director Viall.
Aye.
Motion passes four-oh. Congratulations, Director. We're going to take a brief recess just to reshuffle our chairs, and then we'll be back to business momentarily.
Oh, I think I may carry mine.
It's always, I'm always out there, but yeah, I don't feel alone in this.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Back to where we started.
Yeah.
Oh, shoot, I need to get the chat room.
Your chair.
No, I need the same.
Oh, yes.
Get it, thank you. Actually, Scott, we do need to swap out chairs. My feet don't touch them. One of us is too tall, one of us is too short, and that's sort of like the Frito-Fans.
Okay, everybody ready?
We are ready.
All right, I'm going to call us informally back to order, since I didn't formally call us out of order.
That was my fault, I apologize.
That's okay. We're going to move on to item number five, this is adoption of the agenda. The motion?
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. All those, is there any questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining? Motion passes five-oh. Next on our agenda is the recognition of staff, students, and community. Six-point rent, one, recognition of Boundary Committee members. I believe this is for Mr. O'Call.
Thank you, President Oshka and members of the Board. Back in September, you commissioned a Principal and Parent Volunteer Committee, supported by a resource team of district staff, to undertake an important and challenging task: study the middle school boundaries throughout the district, rebalance the enrollment among the schools, and propose new boundaries that retain the demographic integrity of the schools. In addition, you asked the committee to devise transition recommendations to make the move of students from one school to another as smooth and considerate as possible. Not only were the committee members asked to do this work for the 2017-18 school year, but also to look ahead to the planned reopening of a new Hunt Middle School in 2021 and provide some predictability for the future. The committee has completed its work, and you'll be considering its recommendations later in the meeting. To honor the volunteer work put in by this dedicated group, I'll read off the names of the committee members and the support staff members, and if you're here in the audience tonight, please, as I read your name, come up and line up here behind me. Scott Rich, Tammy Larson, Billy Harris, Sean Martin, Christine Brant, Patrice Zolkowski, Tim Bernt, Zeke Edmund, Donna Basel, Andre Stout, Wendy Hawthorne, Lori Till, Pamela Smith, Jessica Fuller, Linda Beerdimple, Serena Crumble, John Brown, Andrea Frazier, Sandra Strong, Liesel Samkyle, Caressa Bowman, Darren Campbell, Gertrude Joyner, Conrad Toftoy, Erin Harris, Anthony Stewart, Jasmine DiArmond, Tu Amet, Doug Hostetter, Sandra Jacobson, Rosalyn Medina, Steve Murakami, Sue Race, and I provided support to the group, too. Facilitation of the group was provided by Andrea Klink-Scales of Alta Planning and Design and Tyler Vick of Flow Analytics. So on behalf of Tacoma Public Schools, I want to thank all of the members of the committee for their months of dedicated service and helping make Tacoma Public Schools better. Thank you.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Thank you, we really appreciate your service. Thanks, dear. She did well, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, we appreciate it. Thank you. You did well, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is item number seven, the Superintendent's Report, and I believe that Superintendent Santorno has an introduction to make prior to that.
Yes, Board of Directors, Renee Trueblood, pending your approval, will join us on January 3rd as a general, as our new General Counsel. She lives in Tacoma and has expressed passion for the community. She received a Bachelor of Journalism degree from the University of Missouri-Columbia and a Juris Doctor from the University of Puget Sound. She comes with a great deal of expertise. We had, we went through a rigorous nationwide search to fill this position, which brought in a lot of high-quality talent, and Renee definitely stood out. She brings so much vision and leadership and is so thoughtful, and we know that she's the exact fit for Tacoma Public Schools. I'll have you read, I think, I don't know if her resume is back there, is it? It's, she's won every award there is possible, and she's had a great deal of experience. So we are so happy to have you, Renee. Would you come up and just say a few words? Renee Trueblood.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Santorno, and thank you, President Oshka and members of the Board. I am just thrilled and honored to be joining this amazing team. This, to me, is the capstone of my 22-year career, which started here, really, in Tacoma. I'm just thrilled, I have two children, a daughter who's attending School of the Arts here in Tacoma, and she's absolutely thriving, and a younger one who's at Annie Wright School, and I served on the Annie Wright Board for six years, and so I'm absolutely honored, and thank you very much for this opportunity.
Welcome.
Welcome, thanks, Renee.
Secondly, I've asked Ms. Medina to review our Boundary Review Process. I know we have some speakers speaking about the Boundary Review Process. There are definitely some things on the web that describe our process, but since you're going to be voting on this later, I ask her to give another preview of what the committee is recommending.
Thank you, I'm going to wait for my presentation to pop up. Thank you. Okay, so it is important for me to note that this has been nearly a year-long process in the Boundary Development. We presented this timeline to you back in February and in April of 2016 as part of the process of commissioning the work. We knew we had several factors that would need to be addressed, primarily the opening of Stewart, the over-enrollment of the Eastside Schools, and the opening of Hunt in '21-'22. Our overview of the Boundary Process begins with the steps that were considered by the Board at the first reading on April 14th and with Board approval on April 28th. The superintendent charged a representative committee with recommending revised attendance areas, defining attendance areas for a future Hunt Middle School, and balancing enrollment. The plan for the committee was to begin their work in September of 2016 and submit the recommendations to her in November. There are many participants in the process of Boundary Development, namely the technical team membership, which includes multiple disciplines of district representation, facilitation, which was provided by Andrea Klink-Scales with Alta Planning and Design, and committee membership, which included parents and principals of schools likely to be affected by the new boundaries. Initially, this was presented to middle school parents, and then we opened up that membership beyond to elementary parents as well. All district middle schools were offered participation, and all participated except Bryant Middle School, based on the Montessori program and their lack of real boundaries. The role of the technical team was to review information related to boundary needs and suggest possible solutions in a springboard or starting-off proposal to the committee. The technical team's work was completed in August of 2016. Once the committee was convened, the technical team role shifted to support, excuse me, to support the committee by making themselves available at the committee meetings and to answer questions regarding practice, policy, or data for the district. The core work of the committee was outlined in the Board-approved Committee Charter, which identified factors that were to be considered when the district developed attendance area boundaries in accordance with the school district's Policy 3130. A calendar of our activities over the course of this Boundary Process with the committee members. On September 12th, the first Boundary Committee meeting was held. The meeting was an orientation covering introductions, explanation of charge, parameters of the committee, review of the meeting's schedule and timelines, and development of working agreements, and how decisions would be made by the committee. Principals and parents were identified as voting members of the committee, and technical team members were not. The second meeting provided the context for the task and reviewed the enrollment and capacity data, the maps, the GIS software, and the springboard proposal prepared by the technical committee. On September 21st, we added a community feedback loop, and that was done to gain an understanding of community and neighborhood concerns in advance of the committee doing any work, so that they could build their recommendations based on that feedback. Over the course of the next several meetings in late September and early October, the committee proposed, tested, and adopted changes to an evolving Boundary Process through an iterative repetitive work effort. This work was supported by Geographical Information, or GIS, planning software that allowed them to assess the enrollment and other demographics impacted of each proposed change. Committee members themselves also provided valuable local knowledge related to such things as neighborhood affiliation and walking and biking routes. On October 19th, after the committee had developed a set of preliminary recommendations, they conducted a public preview. This open-house event was resembling a science fair. Community members gathered around tables where maps of the preliminary boundaries were displayed, and committee members were stationed there to listen to their questions, comments, and concerns. On October 24th, we added an additional public preview at the request of our committee. Through all of our outreach opportunities, we made every effort to inform the parents of opportunities to present information and participate. Those notifications were made through social media, were published on the district website, were covered in newspaper articles, and were communicated through School Messenger. Following the final public preview, the committee discussed community input to determine whether changes to the preliminary recommendations were warranted. On November 9th, the committee conducted a formal public hearing where they received community feedback on their nearly-final recommendations. At their final meeting, the committee reconsidered their recommendations in light of the public comments that they had received. They also finalized transition recommendations, which were ways that the school district could ease the transition for students and families who would be affected by the Boundary At our last committee meeting, we heard concern from parents in a particular area that would be impacted. These concerns were noted, excuse me, to the district after the public hearing had finished and one day before the final committee meeting was planned. In response to the concern that those families had not been heard from, the district held an additional community meeting to determine their concerns and identify next steps. That meeting occurred November 21st, the same day as the Board preview identifying the proposed changes. Based on the feedback that we received at that meeting on November 21st, the technical team made a decision to hold one final committee recommendation meeting on November 30th to review the concerns expressed by those families and to review options of ways to remedy those. That meeting delayed the planned presentation to the superintendent, which had been scheduled for November 30th. The committee submitted their final recommendations to the superintendent on December 2nd. The process allowed for the superintendent to review the recommendations, possibly modify them, and approve them for presentation to the school board. Finally, we intended from the beginning to provide a transparent process. Committee members expressed their desire to have community feedback as well. Community members were welcome to attend all Boundary Committee meetings as observers, and comment forums were available at every meeting that we held. All comments received were shared with the committee members at or before their next meeting. Written summaries of committee meetings were posted on the district website, and the website featured an email link for people to submit comments or questions. Questions and answers, questions were answered in emails, and comments were shared with committee members at or before their next meeting. The district and schools informed parents about the process and encouraged participation in public previews and public hearings. Thank you.
Thank you. Rosalyn, we appreciate that. Then, the other Superintendent's Report, we wanted to make sure that we gave you an opportunity to look at how we're aligning the curriculum with the standards, so I asked Ms. Verhart if she would give us a brief update on the standards alignment process.
Good evening, President Oshka, members of the Board. Tonight's report is the first of a four-point, a four-part series. The Teaching and Learning Team recently launched a new project called K-12 Alignment of Standards. This work is in close partnership with many of the departments around in the, are built in the district, K-12 programs, and Student Services. The first phase of this project involves auditing our current system to see where alignment already exists and identify potential areas for growth. All Tacoma Public School educators have been invited to share their input through a survey. Student focus groups are being conducted to collect data and help us understand students' understanding of standards and mastering of standards, and we've partnered with a Family and Community Partnership Office to invite families and community to share their perspective. On January 18th, the audit report will be released. It will contain findings and recommendations. Alongside this document, we'll share a two-to-three-year blueprint containing our next steps for aligning all kindergarten through 12th-grade standards. The Board is invited to join us for both events, as your schedule allows. We'll be bringing in a national speaker, Larry Ainsworth, who has worked with districts all over the United States to help with the process of aligning standards and making certain that we are looking deeply into those standards to select, to identify those that become the priority. This is the start to a multi-year work around standards alignment, and it's the next evolution for our system when it comes to teaching and learning. You may have noticed a weekly insert in your Friday Reports under the Teaching and Learning section. This is the iGrow newsletter that focuses on topics related to the standards alignment and our five-cell-five-D instructional framework. The iGrow newsletter is being distributed weekly through the Friday Report, the District-to-School Connection, that goes out to building administrators, and the Innovator that goes out to all staff. At the end of January, we'll be back before you again to provide you an overview of the audit report findings and a brief overview of our two-to-three-year blueprint goals. In the meantime, you can access updates on this project as they become available on our Project Management Office website and in your Friday Reports. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the Superintendent's Report.
Great, I do want to make sure that we take a moment to really offer our thanks to the Boundary Committee, because it is a great deal of work, it's highly technical work. You've taken a lot of time out of your lives, out of your family's lives, to do this work and present this to us and to the Superintendent, so please know how very much we value that and understand. Next, we're going to move on to item number eight, which is Members of the Public who wish to address the Board. School Board members encourage public participation. Your input is very much appreciated. If you would like to address the school board, follow these steps. Complete a citizen's request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Card submitted after the public comment period has ended will not be considered at this session. The Superintendent will call your name when it's your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. You'll have up to three minutes to share your comments. There's a timer, and I think it's after the first two minutes, you get a one-minute warning, and then you'll get another warning after, a final after that. And Carla.
First speaker, speaking regarding student safety, Sarah Zier. Sarah will be followed by Brandon Sabatka.
Good evening, my name's Sarah Zier. I'm an attorney with Team Child and a member of the Vibrant Schools Coalition, and I'm following up on the presentation at the last school board meeting about student safety and discipline. I wanted to thank the district for the presentation at the last board meeting and say that we appreciated that and many of the Board's questions about the data, and we hope you will follow up by having a study session to look further into the data and further into strategies to reduce out-of-school discipline. Some of the questions that we hope you will address include the questions that you asked at the meeting, including the reasons for suspension, data by school, and to look more deeply into the disproportionality experienced by Black students, students who have disabilities, and other groups, as well as what specifically is being done to address those gaps. Some additional questions we hope you'll look into or seek clarification about at a study session. Are emergency expulsions reflected in the data that was presented, and if not, what are those numbers? How many students who experience suspension or expulsion are suspended multiple times in the same year? What happens after a student returns from suspension and expulsion? Are schools holding re-engagement meetings with students and families? And what interventions are part of student re-engagement? Are they culturally responsive? Are students returning to the same school, or are they being transferred, especially after long-term suspensions and expulsions? What educational services are being, are students receiving during periods of suspension and expulsion? Additionally, the data showed greater gaps between the goal and the actual suspension rate for students in sixth and ninth grades, and those are significant transition years to middle school and to high school. So what specifically is being done to address those challenges that students are facing during those transition periods? Finally, what is the correlation with the suspension data and academic progress and equity? So thank you very much for the presentation and for the questions that were had, and we hope you will continue this conversation and this important work. Thank you.
The next speakers are speaking regarding the Mason-Sherman Boundary Change. Following Brandon Sabatka is Corey Greenfield, I believe.
Hi, my name is Brandon Sabatka. Nice to see you. I reached out to you guys, so it's nice to meet you virtually. I'd like to ask that we please don't move forward with the Boundary Change. I'm a parent of a Sherman student and soon-to-be two Sherman students. We picked our home specifically for the school districts and for the schools that we would be attending, and I think it's critical that we don't separate kids from their cohort groups. I grew up, my friends that I grew up with all went to elementary school, junior high, and high school together, and they're the closest friends I've ever had, and I think separating students at that critical time between elementary school and junior high is really detrimental to them personally, as well as academically. My family walks our kids to and from school, and so we plan to do so for junior high as well. There's absolutely no safe routes to Truman, there's no sidewalks, there's no crosswalks. For a parent, that's just completely not acceptable, and I feel like the information was not really available to affected parents. The committee didn't have any participation from affected parents, and the information on the Tacoma School Board's, excuse me, the Tacoma School District's website still shows the Boundary out of reach, and so there's misinformation online, and we just have a lot of concerns that we've tried to voice via phone call, letter, or an email. So we're here tonight to speak to you about that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Corey Greenfield, followed by Ruth Greenfield.
Good evening. My name's Corey Greenfield, and my neighborhood is obviously in the area that's going to be affected by the decision today made by you guys, whether or not, you know, Sherman stays where it's at, or we move it to the Truman area. Obviously, I'm opposed to it. I've been with Special Forces for the past 12 years. I've fought for the past four, you know, for four years of my time I've spent overseas defending this country. I choose that to, you know, because I'm concerned with safety, not just for my country, but for my family. So I say all this because when I went to buy my house, I purchased it in an area that I feel is safe. I purchased it in an area where the district is in a school that I desire my daughter to go to. Now, because of this decision that may or may not be made tonight, it's, you know, you're going to move our school from one that I'm totally approve of to one that I'm not approved of, all right? I enjoy the fact that I can take my kid to school every single day, that's amazing. Like the gentleman previous to me, he wants to walk his child to school, I would like to as well. There are no sidewalks, just like you said. I don't appreciate somebody like the committee that was there before saying that, oh, these people are affluent. That was the key word that you guys used. Affluent, I am not affluent, all right? I don't have a lot of money. I took a financial hit on this to try to get my daughter in a great school, all right, that I deemed great, all right? So to me, to my family, we lumped into, because of the neighborhood I chose to live in, to, you know, our concern to be disregarded, because it was the final meeting, is what they said earlier, it was the final meeting. And we were formed with this meeting like a week in advance. We were never, ever, at one time, was it said, through all this other, all the other previous kind of plans that you guys had, never once was that Boundary affected our neighborhood, so we never, we didn't care about it. It was like, okay, it's not our problem. All of a sudden, it is, and it's a week prior, and then it's the last meeting they decide to choose to have, and they brush this aside, saying, hey, we're affluent, and, oh, the kids, there's 71 kids affected by it. I believe Hunt, it doesn't change Hunt, which is 105% capacity rate. It doesn't bother them whatsoever by moving my school or not moving my school, okay? It affects Mason from an 84% to, I think, an 86%, something like that, very mild. I don't understand why we're moving it. So I'm asking you guys, please don't do this, keep the boundaries the same for us. Thank you.
Ruth Greenfield, followed by- Ruth Greenfield, followed by, I believe it's Eugenie Greenfield?
My daughter will be adversely affected by the boundary recommendation the Middle School Boundary Adjustment Committee proposed to the board, which is being put up for a vote tonight. I recently found out that our family is going to be affected by the new plan the committee was considering for Part Two. The Sherman Committee hadn't received any communication about this change, and it seems that there was not any time left to gather any information, voice an opinion, or to stop the committee from making this recommendation. My only chance to act was to send an email and to attend a committee meeting that was going to be on November 30th at 6:00 PM. I did both. When the meeting began, the, those attending in opposition of the recently proposed plan were told they were going to be unable to speak. So the previously sent-in emails were our only input that was going to be considered. The committee was only given a brief amount of time to digest a huge stack of emails, and during the brief review, one of the committee members spent a good portion of the time looking at his phone and not at the material. When the discussion began, another committee member stated that he didn't want to have to attend another meeting, so the decision had to be made once and for all. Later, the same committee member stated, let's proceed with the plan, which will ensure we don't need to meet again in five years. This was in front of all of us. This was extremely disheartening. My family was being affected because the committee members had been at it for a while and were tired of exploring options, which I understand, but when it's affecting so many people in the community, it's really unacceptable. No one sought to solicit feedback from the Sherman neighborhood, but when they discussed the changes that would affect Jason Lee and Hilltop, the committee had made a concerted effort to coordinate an outreach campaign to those communities. Why were two communities in the same town handled so differently? A comment by one of the committee members during the meeting on November 30th may shed light on this, and he referred to us, the Sherman parents, as being affluent parents from the North End. When one of the Sherman parents asked why neighborhoods closer to Hunt weren't being considered to attend Hunt, Rosalind Medina stated that they weren't being considered for fear of discrimination claims, since those neighborhoods were impoverished neighborhoods. Based on those statements and the actions of the Middle School Boundary Adjustment Committee, they are handling the committee, the communities they considered impoverished with white gloves, but are altogether neglecting the community that they refer to as the affluent parents from the North End in the Sherman neighborhood. Throughout the committee meeting on November 30th, the GIS consultant relayed various statistics to the committee, all of which argued in favor of the Sherman families remaining assigned to Mason Middle School, such as if the Sherman community, if the Sherman families were permitted to remain at Mason, the Sherman numbers would only marginally increase, is what he had said. Our children do not have safe routes to walk to school, and our children will be separated from close friends they have developed deep friendships with in many cases since kindergarten. Our ask is that you grant our wish for the Sherman neighborhood to have our children remain at the Mason Middle School, and that you don't proceed with Part Two of the committee's recommendation. And then before I finish, I'm just asking those in the room who are present today, who are attending in opposition of the recommendation proposed by the Middle School Boundary Adjustment Committee, to please stand up so that the board can see who is here for that reason. Thank you.
Eugenie Greenfield, followed by Brandy Sabatka.
So my name is Eugenie Greenfield, and I, thank you. So my name is Eugenie Greenfield, and I have my friends, I've been, I've been friends with them since kindergarten, and I'm kind of mad that I'm only going to Mason for one year, and then I have to go to Truman, because all my friends are in the Mason area, and I want to still hang out with my friends and play with them at recess. And also, it's not fair, because my mom and dad checked the area, and it was supposed to go to Mason, and then suddenly it just went to Truman, and it's not fair, because I've been friends for a long time, and I'm, I'm getting even more friends, and then I'm mad because I have to go to Truman, and then, yeah, and I won't be able to play with my friends, and, um, it, and that's mostly it.
Thank you. Thank you, Brandy. Maria Stevens, followed by Mark Conley.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Brandy. I have a first grader at Sherman, and I just wanted to let you know that I walk almost every day to school. And the city of Tacoma, as recently as November 16th, put out safe routes to school with a strong encouragement to walk to school and to bike to school, and yet, I don't think you maybe did due diligence when you suggested that we start walking to Truman. So if I were to walk my son to school, there is absolutely no safe route. Orchard Street doesn't have a single sidewalk on either side of the road from 31st all the way to 42nd Street. From 42nd to about 38th Street on either side of the road, there are massive berms where I can't take a stroller, I can't take a bike, nothing. So if we were to take the other continuous side of the freeway, or the other side, or the other continuous road option, it is a four-lane freeway. I'm not going to do that to either of my children. So I, I just don't see how I would continue to continue walking to school, and I don't think that's fair for you to take that option away from myself, my children. The other thing is, it's just not fair that you're going to be separating my son, who has made very close friendships with his classmates, and all of his buddies live on the other side of this divide that you've created. This has been an enormous stressor for my family. It's something that he is now very concerned about, if he's going to have to make new friends, if he's going to have to go to a new school. We specifically chose the, the home that we moved into several years ago and the neighborhood that we moved into because of the Mason boundary. We did not believe it was going to change anytime soon, because it was a historic boundary that has been there for almost 20 years, and so we didn't think it was going to change, and we hope that it won't. I would implore you to keep it where it's at and let our children stay together and go to Mason. Thank you.
Mark Conley, followed by Stephanie Davison. Did I skip Mark Conley? Mark Conley first?
How did you know that wasn't me? Anyway, my name is Mark Conley. I'm against the boundary change because I live in the affected area, and I want to know if the school board or the committee took these two factors into consideration. First, approximately 17% of Mason students currently live out of the service area and utilize open enrollment. Five to 10% may enter Mason by falsifying enrollment documents. This is not based on something I pulled out of a hat. My personal experience as a former Mason principal, and I spend a lot of time comparing enrollment to property tax rolls and so forth, because when I was, it was a major issue, because everybody wanted to get into Mason. In summary, these factors clearly, clearly affect enrollment numbers. So my question is, will you allow students who live out of the service area currently, and will you keep enrollment discrepancies at a minimum, or will you allow these two groups to displace students who currently live in the service area of Mason? Thank you.
Stephanie, followed by Chris Davison.
Sorry, it's hard to hear back there. My name is Maria Stevens, and I am here to ask that you keep the catchment area north of North 37th Street and east of Orchard within the Mason Middle School boundary line. As I am sure you have heard, this was a recent change to the proposed boundary lines. Although this process began back in September, our catchment area did not appear as moving until days before the final comment period and vote on November 9th. This is a concern, as you, and as you can tell from the outpouring from the community, we were caught off guard. Because this was a last-minute change, there was no representation from our catchment area in all of the committee meetings prior to November 9th. Therefore, we ask that you be our voice in this process. In this proposal, Sherman Elementary will be split 50/50. I cannot understand why we would ever want to split an elementary school, especially at a very important time in an adolescent's life. Middle school is challenging enough. I can't imagine having to move on to middle school, which is already a difficult time, when half of your classmates are moving on to another school. In regards to the open enrollment process, out of the only 71 students in this catchment area, say half are then able to go on to Mason Middle School through open enrollment. That means that roughly 30 students will then have to go on to Truman without their classmates. More and more universities are moving towards first-year cohort models, first-year experience programs. Research has shown that when students are able to move with their peers and have a sense of belonging, there is an increase in social integration, active involvement within the classroom and outside of the classroom, as well as academic success and retention rates. Why would we not want the same for our students? I would also like to know if the committee looked into the safe walking routes for students from this catchment area, as others had mentioned. There are currently numerous safe walking routes, including pedestrian crosswalks from our catchment area to Mason Middle School with low-volume traffic. If our students are now forced to move to Truman, they will have to cross over a busy arterial with no crosswalks and walk along a state highway. We ask your support in keeping our children together and allowing our boundary line to remain in the Mason boundary line. Thank you for your time.
I apologize, Ms. Stevens. You should have been before.
Oh, I thought I heard, I thought I heard that. Thanks.
It was me. Stephanie Davison? Or Chris Davison? Oh, Stephanie's here. Take your time.
Thank you for letting me voice my concerns over the Mason-Truman boundary. While the boundary proposal intentions may be principled, it does not seem to take into account the most important factor, that the stats and numbers used are individual children and families. We are using numbers to tear apart a Sherman community of close friends, eliminating any sense of comfort and familiarity going into middle school. I fully appreciate the fact that there are many factors at play when structuring school boundaries, but it shouldn't be at the expense of breaking a bond that children have formed. Children these days go through so much. Allowing them to transition into middle school with their close friendships can provide a huge sense of comfort and allow for greater confidence. Middle school's an adjustment for children. It's a much larger facility, multiple teachers to get used to, more study responsibilities. To have your core base of friends transition with you can help ease anxiety about entering middle school. Entry anxiety is common, but having to lose 50% of your friends is not. This boundary proposal will add anxiety to the Sherman children, and today we have the option and power to change that by keeping the historic boundary for the Mason Middle School. There is a study from Psychological Science that states, "It's always a painful thing when friendships end, no matter what age you are, but for middle schoolers, it is especially awful. These years are a time of huge cognitive and emotional changes, which elevate the significance of friendships at the same time that growing independence from parents heightens interconnections between friends. Your friendships mean more to you at this age than they ever did before. This is why I think it is imperative to object the Mason-Truman boundary change that would tear our Sherman friendships in half, the only elementary school that will be affected this drastically with the boundary proposal. Please keep our children's friendships as a stable part of their life going into middle school. Part of a school's responsibility is to provide a safe and nurturing space for children to learn and grow. If that environment is broken by the approval of a boundary change, perhaps it's time to rethink the strategy and keep our kids together." Thank you.
Chris Davison.
You know, I can remember as a kid, when my mom came to me and said, I was finally old enough to walk to school if I had a trusted group of friends. And it was, it was a great sense of accomplishment. It was a great sense of freedom as a youth, to be able to walk to school with this group, to be able to conversate, to be able to build, keep relationships, relationships that lasted into college. This is a feeling that my two boys, sitting back here, are never going to know, because when I look at these boundary changes, there's no safe way for them to walk to school. They're not going to have that opportunity. When I look at who their close friends are, they're not going to be able to go to the same school with them. They're not going to be able to grow up and have some of those strong feelings that I was able to develop as a kid. I want more from my kids. This boundary change is going to give them less.
Russell, it doesn't seem that the committee, I mean, that the, the public has heard about the, the grandfathering? Is that proposal, that was a mediation to the recommendation?
Correct, and it has been incorporated into the resolution attachment, where we will allow students who have current family members or current people living at the same address with them to attend Mason without having to apply, and which is our current You have a look on your face that you want to say something.
In essence, the students that are K-1, 2 right now?
Correct.
They will be grandfathered into Mason? And is that, that's the question?
If they have, if they have a family member currently attending.
So if you're currently at Mason?
So if you're, if you're entering as a sixth grader, if you're entering as a sixth grader in the year that the boundary adjustment changes, and you have an eighth grader that's attending there, then family members would be given first preference to attend that school.
So where can the, the folks that have come tonight to testify? There's a, there's a couple of things on the website I think that they need to see. Number one, that each one of the questions about safe walking distance and some of the other issues have been addressed, and so can you tell them how to get to that place on the agenda? And then if they want to look at the grandfathering language, where do they go to see that?
So the grandfathering language is what is attached to the agenda currently, which is out on the website. And then the, the concerns that parents addressed to the board members or to the superintendent have been put into a sort of an FAQ, and that is available at the back of the room.
Okay.
There was only 35 copies there could be that we ran out. I apologize. And I can post this out onto the boundary website this evening to make sure that we get it there.
Okay.
So anyone can have access to it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing no further comment, we're moving on to the consent, oh, am I correct? Yeah, the consent agenda. Can I have a motion for approval?
I move approval. Second?
Consent agenda has been moved and seconded. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining? Motion passes, 5-0. Number 10 is policy matters, and we have none, so I'm moving on to number 11, Quarterly Financial Update. There is no Quarterly Financial Update. A presentation on the financial health of a district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at tacommaschool.org/financialreports. Number 12, Curriculum and Instruction, 12.1, Approval of the Tacoma Community College, College, and the High School Interagency Agreement for 2016 through 2021.
Assistant Superintendent for K-12?
Yeah, there it is. Assistant Superintendent for K-12 Support on behalf of the Executive Director of Secondary Education recommends that the Board of Directors approve the interagency agreement with Tacoma Community College for the 2016-2021 school years. Funding source, students paid directly to Tacoma Community College.
I'll move approval.
Second?
Motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any questions or comments? Director Hines?
It says that we may, that the, there's a $325 fee per course that the district may pay for. Do we have any sense of how many students that might be and at what cost?
I believe that's paid by the student. That's a student fee.
There was a piece in there that said the district-
We may collect it.
-has the option to collect it, but not to pay it.
Correct.
So we would collect it on behalf of TCC, but the district would not be responsible, and that if the family wanted to pursue financial aid and other college-offered financing, that that would be between the college and the family.
Yes, correct.
Great. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, or who's abstaining? Motion passes, 5-0. There are no business matters under 13. Moving to 14, other business. 14, 12.1, Approval of the Annual Continuous School Improvement Plans for the 2016-17 Year.
The Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support recommends that the Board of Directors approve the annual renewal of the Continuous School Improvement- approve the annual renewal of the continuous school improvement plan for the 2016-17 school year.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining? Motion passes, five zero. Item number fourteen point two, adopt resolution number twenty seventeen, middle school boundary adjustments.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt resolution two-one-zero-seven, directing the adjustment of district attendance areas of the middle schools.
Can I have a motion?
Yes, move adoption.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All the, is there any questions or comment?
Yes, I'd like to offer an amendment at this time that we keep the Truman boundaries the same as they have been. I just hear that it all came really towards the end. They didn't have time to really express themselves. It's gonna divide a neighborhood. I don't think this is in the best interest of that neighborhood. I'm concerned about the safe-walking conditions also, because I walk that area, and I know that on Orchard Street there are not sidewalks, and I don't know that the city is gonna be predisposed to putting those in, so I would like to offer that amendment. Chelsea?
Um, I'd first like to say that all the schools, the Tacoma Public Schools, are great schools, so I don't think they should worry about the school that your kid is going to, 'cause it's gonna offer you a great education, but coming from a student's side, I understand the younger age of having friends, and I love my friends I've had since elementary school, so I can relate to that, but I would also like to say that they should not worry about the education your students are gonna receive, 'cause it's gonna be a great education no matter where they go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, just following parliamentary procedure, we have a motion to amend on the table. I believe that supersedes the original motion. Is there a second to the amendment to the motion? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
The amendment to the motion has been moved and seconded. Are there questions and comments about the amendment?
Yeah, I have a question. What is the impact, then? How does that change the numbers?
In the situation where the, we would keep the Truman, the currently requested Sherman group in the Mason boundary area, in five years, that would put, I mean, really, this is a bigger conversation than I can give you in just a thirty-second preview, but it would put Mason at a hundred-and-three percent of-
Yes, it does.
I'm gonna ask that you keep your comments in the background to a minimum. We're having dialogue at the DS. Thank you very much. Please continue, Ms. Medina.
In 2020, with the projections that were prepared by the GIS consultant, the expectation is that the Mason boundary area with the catchment, not the currently attending students, not who's being put into the school based on choice currently, the catchment area would be at a hundred-and-three percent, and Truman would be at sixty-four percent or sixty-eight percent. I'm sorry, I don't have that number off the top of my head, and I didn't brag my book. And it would create a disparity between the two schools. There were four proposals that were presented to the Boundary Committee, one being move all of those students back, one being to move all Sherman students to Truman, one being to keep the recommendation, and off the top of my head, I can't remember the fourth one, but essentially what the recommendation of the Boundary Committee was, was based on all of the facts, the thirty hours of work that they put into the Boundary Committee process, they recommended that they keep that boundary as it was.
So, Susan, can you update us about, about where we are in the amendment and how it works? Give us the parliamentary procedure.
You have a motion to amend that's been seconded, so you would vote first on the motion to amend to see whether that motion to amend is approved or not, and then you'd, if it's approved, you'd vote on that actual motion, which would incorporate the different boundaries. I believe the motion was to leave the boundary for Truman as it is. Is that accurate? If not, then you'd go back to the original motion and vote on the original motion, the original resolution.
Okay, thank you.
But we can still have discussion about the amendment.
Yes. Long discussion with the amendment.
Well, just along that line of question, when I look at the data that's provided, it shows that the 2017-2018 proposal for Mason puts it at ninety-nine point five percent of capacity. So we are at almost a hundred percent of capacity.
I'm so sorry, can you repeat that?
Sure.
Is there a question for me?
I'm just, I'm looking at the information that was provided as part of the resolution. So it shows with respect to Mason that the 2017-2018 proposal is, that there's ninety-nine point five percent, the RPC for 2016 is ninety-nine point five percent. I'm trying to understand the impact with the Truman, because I see that Truman is at, is significantly over capacity. So the RPC for 2016 for Truman is a hundred-and-twenty-one percent?
Correct, yes. That's the 1718, yes.
So if we were to leave it the same, then Mason is at almost a hundred percent capacity, and Truman is at a hundred-and-twenty-one-point-one percent capacity?
I'm sorry, that the current, what you're looking at right now is the 2017-18 numbers. So what we're proposing are, for the Sherman area and the Mason-Truman, is twenty-one, twenty-two implications.
I'm looking at the twenties, the RPC for 2016, that's a part of the 1718 proposal, shows Truman at a hundred-and-twenty-one percent.
Correct.
And Mason at ninety-nine point five percent.
Correct.
So if we were to leave it status quo, then both of those schools are, for Mason, it is at capacity, and we see that the projection is it will, it will go above capacity in five years, and that for Truman, they're at a hundred-and-twenty-one percent, and the projection is that it would get to a hundred-and-twenty-six-point-six percent by 2025. Is that, so if we were to, if we were voting on the amendment, so I'm trying to understand, if we were to adopt the amendment, then you have both schools above a hundred percent by 2025. Is that correct?
No. No, because of the Hunt component. So we're gonna move a bunch of, we're gonna shift a bunch of students out of Truman into Hunt and try to, try to balance out. We gotta create a Hunt boundary area, and so that's what's not represented in the 1718 proposal, because it doesn't impact 1718. It doesn't come into effect until twenty-one, twenty-two.
But the Truman at a hundred-and-twenty-one percent, the RPC for 2016, then that's gonna be their reality for 2017?
That's correct.
Okay. And Mason would stay at ninety-nine point five percent?
Correct.
If we keep the-
I have a question. In that regard, I, we're talking about twenty, the impact when we reopen Hunt, correct? And since I live on the west side, west side kids will return back to Hunt, and that's when Truman's enrollment will fall, and Mason's will continue to be overcrowded unless we do this, this equity change in boundary. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So what we're really talking about now is the impact of 2020 and not 1718. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. I am concerned about the impact on Truman if we do not adopt these boundary changes, and this is about equity. This is a core value of this, this school district, that all kids will receive the same programs and same opportunities. And if Truman's enrollment falls that low, their, their enrollment will not sustain some of the programs that they are currently involved in. And I wanna make a comment, too, that in, in the process of people being zealous, and I understand protecting our kids and where we want them to go, quite frankly, other kids have been hurt. I have several Truman parents who are pretty hot, that live in my neighborhood, who feel that this whole process has demeaned their children, disrespected them, and quite frankly, insulted the staff and the administration at Truman School. As Chelsea said, we have high-quality programs there. Truman is not an underperforming school. It's above average in most of our academic benchmarks. It is, it is a leader in our whole, in the administration and implementation of our Whole Child Initiative, and it's leader in Avid. For many years, I have, you know, I'm a native Tacoma. I grew up in ten blocks from Sherman. I know what the neighborhood is. I had to change schools twice. My parents moved there, thought we were gonna go to Washington, Mason and Stadium, and wound up at Downing, Mason and Wilson. My own kids changed when some boundaries changed on the west side. We do this because we are about all kids and every kids every day. I have been really, as a native Tacoma and a leader in this community, and as someone said to me, you know, "You need to say what needs to be said," and I'm going to, about tone of these remarks that have been made, whether about the kids that attend Truman. And I think all of you need to go home and think about that.
Do you think anything about anybody at Truman?
So I'm gonna ask that the audience refrain from making comments at this time. Please refrain from making comments from the gallery at this time.
Excuse me, you're out of order. This is about issues of equity. The children that attend Truman deserve to have the same programs as the children that attend Mason, or Hunt, or Giadroni, or anywhere else across the district. That's what that means up there. And, you know, I do understand, and I think all of us do, but we have to make these hard decisions, and we have to do what's right for all of the kids. And in the issue of the, of the Truman thing, the kids will be bussed. My kids couldn't walk to school because of bad traffic on Jackson. It's a reality anymore in our community as we grow. And I would hope that all of you would go home and think a little bit about, how can we make this situation better and come back and unite? The other thing, too, is, is we look at, also had some Mason parents call me and say, "I've been dealing with overcrowding. It just said, we don't like to be," and I went to Mason, "that we don't like to be categorized as thinking our school is better than everybody else's because we're not. We are one city, we are one school district." And if you look forward from between now and the year 2043, there will be no majorities in our community. Our kids all need to learn to get along, make new friends, and help redesign what America's going to look like. And that's what equity is about. And it's about, I mean, my friends that I made, some of us got separated in kindergarten, we came back together in high school and so on, but this community is large enough for all of us, and our schools, Truman is a very friendly, accepting school. And I know the kids from Geiger that have gone over there have been, really liked it. In fact, some of them are saying, "I think we'll stay and not go to Hunt when it reopens," but I, I think they may change their mind when they see what a beautiful new building that will be. So I'm asking you to consider the fact that we, as a school district, are larger than one school. And as Chelsea said, you know, kids will play together after school. If you live across the street, we certainly did. We lived on the boundary between Mason and, or Wilson and Stadium, and we kept our friends. This was a hard, hard thing for me to deal with, quite frankly, because I think all the people that know me in this community know that for the last fifty years in my career, I have pushed hard for equity for all. And I cannot in good conscience vote for this amendment, because it will impact Truman, and it will impact it substantially in the year 2020, and I think the children at Truman deserve the same quality of program that the children at Mason. And I think if you talked to the majority of parents at Mason, I think they would agree with that. And I know that, and I don't blame the parents over at Geiger and a few others who called me and said, you know, "This is demeaning to our children." And I think that sometimes we forget about that. So I would ask you to let's move forward, let's unite, and let's make the best of this situation, and we'll look back on it ten years from now when we have to do this, and I won't be here thankfully, from this process again. That we, we will say we made the right decision. Thank you.
So we're discussing the amendment to the motion to adopt the recommended boundary change. The amendment is to alter the boundaries to include the Sherman catchment in the Mason catchment. Are there any other board comments or discussion specific to the amendment? Director Winskill?
I'd just like to say that when we look at the open enrollment numbers at Mason, and then we let the Sherman people in, that would probably mitigate that, the numbers that would come in, it would still allow that neighborhood to come there, so.
Any other questions or comments? I have one comment, and that is, is that regardless of the outcome of this vote, I wanna express to the parents that have showed up that obviously care passionately about their children in this community and the schools, that we appreciate that passion. We need to make sure that we're working in a way to make sure that there's that same quality across the district, and nobody's a bargaining chip, so I did see that signed back there, and I appreciate that feeling that you're having, but that's not the goal. The goal is to make sure that there's equal opportunity across the district. That being said, and seeing no further comments, can I, all those in favor of the amendment proposed by Director Winskill to item number four, point two?
Fourteen two.
Please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
Yay.
Yay. Motion fails. Two, three. Thank you.
Excuse me, President Oshka, you now need to vote on the main motion.
Thank you very much, yes. I was just readjusting my eyes to the agenda. I appreciate that. So now we're back to the primary motion, which is the adoption of resolution number twenty seventeen, middle school boundary adjustments. Are there, is there any discussion or questions on the primary motion? Director Hines?
With the grandfather clause, the second grandfather clause from, it's dated November fifteenth, 2016, could we get an explanation on specifically number two and number three, and the impact that that has for families that are currently at Sherman?
I'm gonna have Dr. Gracie here read it, because we believe that every student that is at Sherman now is grandfathered, and that they will all have the choice to go to Mason.
Okay, go ahead.
Pardon?
So, and it really comes down to number three, and the language says, "In order to keep students from the same family together in the same school, the district will grandfather impacted students in a temporary revised boundary. This means that impacted students who have an older sibling already attending Mason, beginning with 2022 school year, or who live at the same address and are scheduled to attain middle school at the same time, will be provided priority enrollment to Mason. In accordance to the district and regulation, this would be the family's choice, and the district would not provide transportation." So what that means is, is if you have a student that's currently a K-1 or 2, that's when they're gonna be in middle school by the time this hits, that's in Sherman right now, they would have the ability to go to Mason and be grandfathered in. The second piece of that clause says, "If you have a sibling that's not in school, then our district policy around choice says that you have priority enrollment status into that, as long as your sibling's in that same level." And so it is a temporary boundary revision that honors the kids that are in Sherman right now and allows their younger siblings to potentially be impacted. That is the adjustment that the superintendent has made in the recommendation that is outside the committee, that has not been, I think, shared so other family members can know yet.
And I appreciate that clarification, and I appreciate the parents coming. You know, that was my concern at the last board meeting, is how do we come up with something that is fair? And what we've done is create certainty that those families that are currently at Sherman, who would like their child to continue on to Mason, have that opportunity to do so, at the same time allowing the school district to be able to predict enrollment numbers, which is always a challenge. So I, that to me seems like a fair compromise. We cannot accurately predict who's not already in our school system, but it, but I read every single email that's come in on this issue, and I appreciate the perspective offered in this, to me seems like a reasonable way to address certainty for those families that are currently at Sherman, that their kids will be able to go to Mason if they so choose.
Can I just, I have a comment, President. The district would still have those families that attend Sherman, that wanna go to Truman, would still be provided transportation with recommendations. And so that's, ultimately, the grandfathering clause would lie in the decision of the family, so.
And I just want, and I appreciate, 'cause we have been talking about this, so when we hear concern about the, the committee process, understand that the committee's role was to present a recommendation to the superintendent. The superintendent's responsibility is to then present something to the board that we can take action on. And I have seen in conversations that we've had, I've seen a willingness to- had, I've seen a willingness to consider what many felt was offered at the 11th hour, because there wasn't an adequate amount of time. There was misinformation on the website. And so, I appreciate the thoughtfulness with which you have tried to listen to those concerns expressed by community members and board members, and come up with, come up with an option that seems to capture all of the issues that have been addressed. So, thank you for not, it wasn't just, "Here's what the committee recommended, and you rubber-stamped it and put it in front of us." That was the beginning of the vetting of what was recommended, and there have been alterations to that, and I appreciate that, because that puts us in an awkward position if it's just, just a straight through. So, that was the process. And we adopted the process that gave the direction to the committee, and it's the similar process that we used for the elementary school boundary readjustment. So, thank you for taking the time to go back and, and offer your input into the product that you put before us tonight.
Sure, thank you.
Dr. Garcia, if I might clarify?
Director Viall?
I'm sorry, President Oshka. So, those parents that would choose, for example, to send their children to Truman, if they're in that boundary, they will receive the bus transportation. Is that correct?
That is correct. And the temporary revision is, so, it would sunset with this year's kindergartners, unless they had an older sibling that was also attending middle school at the same time. And there's a reminder here as well, is that any family has the ability to access the choice enrollment. And so, even if a family wanted to potentially come from another area, or after the sunset of the temporary boundary revision, they'd still have the ability to choice into whatever school, whether it's Mason, Truman, or even First Greek, or Hunt, or...
Stewart.
Stewart, Gray, Whitty or Wayne Wright.
Jody.
Jason Lee. I apologize.
Don't forget Giadroni.
Thank you very much. I apologize. I would have heard that from Mr. Harris.
Okay. I also appreciate the work that's been done on this, because, you know, try to be flexible, but on the other hand, not to the detriment of another school. And I think this is a good compromise. And by the time that some of the kids are ready, they may very well choose to go to Hunt when it opens. I expect that. We have seen in this district, build it, and they will come. Geiger being an example of that. Enrollment was 158 when the new school closed, before the new school opened. The day it opened, it was at 394. So, I suspect we probably will, will see that. I think, you know, to really understand is you have to put into perspective that Hunt was closed, and the West Side lost a middle school. And that's why a comprehensive middle school. And that's what upset the whole issue of, of the enrollment. When that happened, that neighborhood over there, which is Furcrest, DeLong, Geiger, all those schools went to Truman, which traditionally had not. And when our neighborhood really felt that we needed a, that area, a comprehensive middle school back, and I'm glad to say that the voters agreed. So, now, you know, always know, you know, these decisions are not, are not easy, but we really do need to make sure that our programs and our, our schools are balanced as to size. Our schools get too large. We have too large classes. That affects, no matter what school it is, the quality of instruction. I can tell you that, having attended Wilson when it was 2,500 kids, and my brother when it was 3,100. Those are big schools compared to where we are now. And if we truly believe in differentiated instruction, every child, every day, then we wind up doing what we're doing tonight. And the grandfathering, I think, is appropriate.
Thank you, Director Viall. Director Cobb?
This is point of clarification. We haven't talked much about the other parts of the Mason Boundary impacted by the change, but this clause is effective for those other sides of the boundary, too, right?
What other boundary?
So, the side of the boundary that moves some students from Mason to Hunt, those families are implicit in this, in this change, too?
I don't think there's any one. No, this was specifically addressed to that wedge, if you will, and acknowledgement of some of the communication and the opportunities that had to be considered where there were students potentially in that wedge that were going to move three times in their transitional years. There are still students, correct me if I'm wrong, that have been in Truman, that are scheduled, excuse me, that have gone to Sherman, that are currently scheduled to go to Truman, and will still go to Truman, because their boundary hasn't changed.
Correct.
So, there aren't, there aren't students?
There are some Sherman students who attend Truman currently.
Okay.
They would still be scheduled to attend Sherman.
I think, Director Cobb, excuse me, question was about, my understanding, so correct us, there aren't students in...
Yes, Mason, that will be attending Hunt. Yes, that's correct. In the lower end of the Mason Boundary Area, those students are impacted by going to Hunt, shifting to Hunt when Hunt opens.
And they were going to Hunt before, when it was closed?
No, some of them. The Hunt Boundary was not identical to what it used to be. The Boundary Committee made recommendations to adjust that, based on building the school size.
So, the question, I think, that I heard is whether or not the same grandfathering for the Sherman families extends to those families who would now go to Hunt instead of Mason. Is that correct, Director Cobb?
I just wanted to be clear, what, given what's written, I was rereading the heading to the, to the addendum and rereading the language that lets, allows families to be grandfathered. And I just want, and I wasn't sure if it makes it clear that it's just for that, that section of the boundary that's impacted.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
All those abstaining, motion passes 4-1. Thank you. Moving on to item number 14.3, adoption of Tacoma Public Schools 2017 Legislative Agenda.
The Deputy Superintendent recommends that the Board of Directors adopt the proposed priority listed in the 2017 Legislative Agenda.
I'll move adoption.
Second?
It has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, all those abstaining, motion passes 5-0. Item number 14.4, approval of bid for Ninth and Broadway Core and Shell Project.
The Director of Planning and Construction, on behalf of the Chief Operating Officer, recommends the Board of Directors accept the bid for Ninth and Broadway Core and Shell Project from Jody Miller Construction Company in the amount of $3 million, $36,000, not including sales tax.
We'll move approval. Second?
Motion's been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments? I have asked if we could have a brief discussion, description of what we're talking about.
Sure. So, I wanted to just give a little bit of background. The building was appraised downtown, and we paid market value for it a few years ago. Currently, it's a B occupancy, which is for businesses, and our goal is an E occupancy, which is more restrictive. And as a result, we will require more stringent safety measures, including seismic upgrades. And so, then, it's a 43,712-square-foot building. To build this building new would be in the area of about $500 a square foot, which would total over $21 million. And so, at a $3 million cost, plus the tenant improvement that we will do to get it up and running for the SOTA students to move from the post office into the Ninth and Broadway building, it's a bargain. There are also, I look at it as an investment in students, really, the opportunity for future expansion and partnerships with businesses and so on. The location is ideal, given that our SOTA students are using parts of the UW-T campus and other downtown areas. It really is a great option for our, for our kids.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. There is no report to the board, so now we're on to board comments and reports. I'm going to take prerogative and jump in here first. I want to recommend that the board have a study session dedicated to the business of the board, so a time that we can spend defining roles and considering opportunities to make sure that we are working to the best of our capacity in the coming year and utilizing our strengths and strengthening our weaknesses. And I would, if, if, if my board members think that this is a good idea, I would propose that we ask the superintendent to help us find a mutually acceptable date in the next 30 days, or 30 days post-Christmas.
Okay.
Wonderful. The only other thing that I want to say is, this is the last boarding before the holidays, and I want to make sure that I say happy holidays to everybody in the district, staff and everybody else. People work their tails off to make sure that we can take care of every student every day, and we absolutely value it. It certainly has brought the whole city to a level of excellence that really we haven't seen for quite some time. So, thank you, and happy holidays. So, I'm done taking my prerogative, and I would ask Director Cobb, you have any comments?
No report.
Forgive me, Vice President Cobb. Director Winskill?
No report.
Director Heinz?
No report.
Director Viall?
Oh, this afternoon, Superintendent Santorno, Dr. Garcia, and I were over at Lincoln when Governor Inslee came. He presented a proclamation to us that recognition of the State Whole Child Month, and it was given to us because we are the leaders in the school districts here in the state on the Whole Child Initiative. So, that was quite an honor. He rolled out his budget, biennial budget for next year for education, and hopefully it will pass. It will bring a good deal of dollars to our schools and help us finally, hopefully, pretty much take care of McCleary, although there are still some questions, and we will be, you know, following and watching. And it's about, he has about $4 billion that he's going to be asking the legislature to allocate, which is about the amount that the court has said that McCleary needs to, under the McCleary Act. So, we will, we will watch, and we, you know, we were really honored at the fact that he chose us to make this statewide announcement today. And he said to me, "I always love to come to Tacoma, because you're where the action is." And I thought that was a really great compliment. And again, thank you, Governor Inslee, for honoring us with your presence today.
Thank you, Director Rob. Viall, Student Representative Olson?
I was going to say, congratulations on the presidency.
Thank you. Okay. Re-getting my composure. Announcements of future board meetings. The next board meeting is Thursday, January 12th. They're right here in this room at 6:00 p.m., followed by a study session on January 19th at 6:00 p.m., and another regular meeting at 6:00 p.m. on January 26th. Seeing no further business, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
You don't need a vote for adjournment, do you? All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 Happy holidays.
You, too.
You, too.